And then the next two.
The next two would be.
How they do that?
The next one would be.
Four fifty.
Yeah, that would be your, uh, one hour parking.
Does that got a pretty young team though?
One hour, no wait a minute, yeah, one hour parking sign.
It's Monday through Friday, eight to five.
Monday through Friday, eight to five. Now, let me get over here.
Oh yeah, that's what we learned. You gotta put somewhere like.
Four fifty-two. There's a picture of it. In this North Forest Street, there's a church. Be right.
Only half the battle on giving that.
Now, let me see if there's something else. Something else.
Yes.
Extra pen.
Yeah, that was the thing that I, and he does like. I mean, he's got a couple that he puts in between. On Monday night, they, they're about out of order.
See.
We were up on them pretty big.
And there should be something on there.
Out of all the best players in the room. We got them.
And then there should be one on there to.
Four fifty-four would be the other one.
Yeah, that'd be the other one.
Yeah, they skipped them.
The.
And then they were complaining about him stepping over the line and like right after that.
Make it a.
You can't tell us that we're not following.
Final, yeah, that's, this is one hour, yeah.
Maybe scored one run.
It would be final, yeah.
Make it.
I couldn't think of the words I wanted, thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
We far in, we at one point, we're like over eighteen or over nineteen in the courthouse at first. We had four different first base play. Couldn't catch a ball.
You were doing.
So we lost the first two games.
He's gonna do, he's got a copy of it.
Braxton was literally catching the ball and they fall and didn't make the other.
I guess I could read it off here, it's just.
Yeah.
How's he like?
I do have a copy of the fire, I think, for your sake.
Alright.
Haven't been able to teach you much because we got, one of the guys going out of town tomorrow, starting tomorrow. So I was like, I need you to get really good at one thing. That way you can do that one thing.
Yep.
I said, once he gets back, then I can start showing you.
Stress now.
Losing eleven, is that right?
Huh?
I lean stressing.
Heard eleven, end up losing by eleven?
Think something like that.
Let's say getting closer got worse.
Yeah.
Two minutes. Okay.
It was on, and then it went off. Video. Okay, now Eric comes back.
Something, whether you're pulling up.
Yeah.
What are they doing, so?
Between the one and two.
My freak.
I saw the big time.
Here we ran like already.
Showing one minute.
Oh, one minute. Oh, really?
When's the next meeting, is it June?
Uh. Tell you here in a second.
June thirteenth?
June thirteenth.
Where's your daughter going to college at?
Take a big guess.
Why didn't know she was, because your boy would die, so.
Yeah, he did, but.
Is he down at Cincinnati?
He's been there, uh, for about two years now.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
He was born like a boy. Went down and visited him a couple times.
Welcome to London City Council Meeting, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Ead.
Here.
Councilman Peters.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
President Comer.
Present.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Hitt.
Here.
Councilman Stahl.
Present.
Alright, good to see everyone this evening. Have you had a chance to take a look at our minutes? Any corrections, questions? Alright, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Alright, we do not have any public hearings this evening and no communications or announcements. Did we have any audience concerns? I didn't, I forgot to check back there.
Tommy Boyd.
Okay. You have Tommy Boyd, if you'll come to the stand, state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please. Thank you.
Tommy Boyd, forty-eight North Union Street, London, Ohio. Uh, real quick ones tonight, but first is an ordinance, I believe we have coming up, about some signs going on Fourth and North Union Street. Uh, I'm not speaking against it, it's just mostly asking that we go to the three readings on it, so we can continue to look into items. Uh, we looked into diagonal parking and figured out that fifty-nine feet across is how much we would need for that. And so after measuring it, we actually have fifty-nine feet and eight inches. So, it is a do, doable process, possibly a possibility. So, nothing else to really hold on it, I was just asking that that wasn't put onto an emergency notice. Uh, second is the courthouse sidewalk, next to Main Street. We've seen this. It looks like it's breaking up pretty bad, and just kind of looking at it again on the way over here, it looks like it's continuing to get worse. And that's the only reason I'm bringing it up. Would that be Madison County that we're talking to about replacing that sidewalk?
Are you talking about the side that has the slate?
Yeah, yeah, that's the part, that's the, uh, uh. Who's in charge of this? Okay. Sounds good, well then I'll kind of chat with them, I didn't know if we had anything that we'd heard from them or anybody that we reached out to, to kind of get that figured out or see if we had any information on it. Nothing yet? All good, well, that's all for me then.
Alright, thank you. Alright, on to our committee reports, we'll begin with Mr. Stahl.
I was at the Finance Committee, and I'll give a report on that, I was at Public Safety, I had a police report. It was on May ninth, this is the police, we are continuing our hiring process for open police officer positions. Nick Jackson resigned as an officer on April twenty-sixth, is currently, leads two open positions to be filled. The Flock Safety Camera Project was implemented in April. There was a success notice already with the locating an elderly subject that had not been in contact with family members, was thought to be in the London area. Officers entered the plate in the system and, and all, and it alerted on the plate with an officer to be able to locate the vehicle and individual. There's no issue of the family and was put in contact with the individual. All cruisers were returned to service after various repairs, it is expected one cruiser will be available by the end of this month. A couple of officers attended railroad enforcement and sign training held at the C S, C S X yard in Columbus. Officer Myers completed his field training program, they participated in the D J F S Children's Carnival, they provided traffic control for the London Marathon. They attended the Madison County Senior Fair at the Madison County Senior Citizen Center on May ninth. L P D app has seven thousand nine hundred and eight downloads. Notice, notable incidents, a homicide at two fifty-five Washington on Friday, the twenty-first of April. Nylan C Harner, seventeen, of Springfield, was arrested for murder. The case is an investigation, is still going on. And a burglary on May one at five fifteen on Lincoln Avenue, the suspect entered the occupied residence and was scared off by the resident. Adam Crawford, forty-four, was arrested and charged with burglary, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hitt.
Yeah, I attended the Public Safety Meeting also, and I'll give the Fire Chief's Report that he submitted, um, for fire EMS. Uh, as far as EMS training, the focus was on active aggressor emergencies. As far as fire training, the focus was on pump and drivers' training. They completed several CPR classes. Um, they're continuing to mount equipment on the new fire engine, and they're awaiting additional mounting brackets. They participated, participated in the Madison County Senior Fair, they participated in the London Middle School Life Fair, they participated in the annual Madison County D D volleyball game. Participated in Miami Valley Children's Development Touch a Truck. And they completed annual generator preventative maintenance for both stations. And next meeting is June thirteenth at five o'clock in the meeting room over here.
Okay, Mr. Hayes.
Okay, uh, attended Public Safety Committee Meeting on five nine twenty twenty-three. Uh, approval of the minutes was, uh, taken care of by three zero vote. You've already heard Fire Chief's Report and Police Chief's Report. Under public concerns, uh, Mr. Larry Gassell of Gassell and Associates Insurance Agency at twenty-seven East Fourth Street, uh, came in, uh, referenced parking spaces for his business. After much discussion, uh, from five, we got down to two spaces were decided upon. I met with Mr. Gassell on Wednesday, the next day, along with Bill Long, Street Superintendent. Uh, we talked again, and Mr. Gassell, uh, agreed upon one sign. Uh, one sign will be placed in front of his business, it'll be on the Fourth Street side of his business. Uh, Mr. Long measured it off, uh, we checked it, and it was spray, spray painted. Going to move on down. Uh, under Safety Service Director comments, uh, builder variance for minimum square foot of garage size. Uh, requesting a change to variance for a two-car garage from six hundred and forty square feet, twenty-four by twenty-six to four hundred and eighty square feet, twenty-four by twenty. Uh, there was a motion to change the minimum size of the two-car garage, it was passed, it's on the agenda tonight. Next, we discussed the minimum width of sidewalks. Uh, currently sidewalks must be five foot wide. Uh, we're requesting to change the minimum width from five feet to four feet for all new developments. I'm gonna say that again, for all new developments. That was brought up and was voted upon, that is also on the agenda tonight. Under old business, we had none. Under public, public comment, um, resident talked about flooding at Brook's Edge. Uh, Mr. Castle found two issues, and they have been corrected. Uh, issue with fire hydrant in the concrete over in front of the old gymnasium. Uh, contractors had to finish concrete work, however, couldn't remove the hydrant due to needed parts. Uh, once we're able to move the hydrant, it'll be cut and filled in with concrete. We adjourned at five forty P M. As Mr. Hitt said, next Public Safety Committee meeting will be June thirteenth at five P M. I also have, uh, Board of Public Utility Minutes from April twenty-seventh meeting. I'm gonna go kind of quick through these, uh, citizens' questions. Uh, questions about old fire hydrants that can be used at the dog park. Uh, Mr. Long said that they would be putting one in at the park, and water would be turned on at the dog park on May first. Also a question regarding a storm sewer. Uh, Mr. Best informed the citizen that was asking about that, that the B P U does not oversee the storm sewers. Under Water Department, uh, Mr. Lulonic motioned to accept sealed bids for the F one fifty pickup truck. Uh, Mr. Skaggs seconded the motion, motion was carried. Uh, part of that legislation is on the agenda for tonight. Wastewater Department, um, there was a question asked by Mr. Lulonic, how long would it take to get a new VAC truck if the board decides to purchase one? Uh, Rick Duncan, the, uh, department supervisor, said it would take approximately six months. Uh, Mr. Duncan remind, recommends that the board pursues the purchase of a VAC truck. Uh, Mr. Best, uh, not worth trading in the VAC truck because it is, it's so old, so other departments could benefit possibly from using it. Under Sanitation Department, um, a review of the notes, uh, Mr. Skaggs made a motion to approve a letter being sent to businesses stating that the city will be enforcing ordinance one zero six zero point zero eight. Private solid waste collectors licenses. Uh, Mr. Lulonic seconded the motion, and the motion was carried. They went into executive session at that time. Came out of executive session, Mr. Lulonic made a motion to hire T J Rice as plant operator per union contract, was seconded by Mr. Skaggs, motion was carried. Mr. Lulonic made a motion to run ad, an ad to hire a water superintendent, Mr. Skaggs seconded the motion, motion was carried. Under New Business, uh, Mr. Long will be putting in requisition for the removal of trees and brush around the lime lagoons at the water plant, approximately thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, also under New Business, seventeenth and nineteenth Kendall Street. Issue with water lines on the property, uh, B P U Board agrees that the water issues is not the liability, responsibility of the city, homeowners must make repairs. Um, Mr. Long questioned if the board has reviewed information provided at the last board meeting regarding the purchasing of cell phones. Uh, Mr. Lulonic said he would currently like to table that particular matter. Uh, Mr. Long, Street Department will mow both water towers and plant for one hundred and twenty dollars each time. Uh, Mr. Best motioned pay Street Department one hundred and twenty dollars each time the water towers and water plant is mowed. Seconded by Mr. Skaggs, motion was carried. Uh, Mr. Long will be getting pricing for electric and concrete for the pole barn at the water tower, will have information at the next meeting. Meeting was adjourned.
That's all you have, sir?
That's all I got.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Robinson?
I don't have anything other than, the next public service meeting will be, uh, June seventh.
Okay, what time?
Uh, six P M.
Six P M, okay.
Might have to move that, but.
Okay. Mr. Peters?
Uh, attended the Finance Meeting, um, and we'll go over that tonight, New Business.
Okay. And Mr. Ead.
I also attended the finance, most of these things are going to come up at new, during the new business here in a minute. However, I do want to address, um, with the fire levy going down, apparently. That was a big part of the discussion, I kind of want to state this publicly, so people, if they haven't heard it or didn't know anything about it, they would know a little bit more. It appears that with the carryover balance that the Fire Department has, mostly due to the COVID money that we've put in there in the past, that we're going to be able to operate the Fire Department the rest of this year, as we currently do. There is the two hundred thousand dollars that was set aside for debt service for London Courts, that, that was brought up in discussion, there is not an ordinance tonight to move that money, but it is, was discussed, that now, if it's necessary, and it probably will be, to transfer that money over to the Fire Department to help them out. That being said, this year, the rest of this year, the services are not expected to change. However, next year, the services could change in a rather dramatic fashion, in that it's, was suggested, I, in fact, I don't even want to bring that up yet, it's just now, at this point, we're not going to change our services, so people can expect the same service from our Fire Department with the amount of squads we have, with the firemen we have, with the same services for the rest of this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Onto our official reports.
Yeah, so with, um, so many ordinances tonight, I thought I'd take it easy on you guys, the only thing I wanted to talk about was, um, mowing, so please, citizens, mow your lawns. If you have a neighbor who's elderly and can't get to it, maybe help them out and mow their lawns, but it's, uh, tis the season, and it's starting to get real bad out there, and we're starting to see all the lawns pop up and, and people not maintaining them, and, and the letters are probably going to be coming real soon, so I just urge the citizens to make sure that we're taking care of not only your lawns, but if you own property, maybe on Kenny or different places, that you make sure that you get out there and get it mowed. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, how about Rex, do you have anything?
Ditto.
Alright.
Mow your grass.
And if you do mow your grass, do not put your clippings in the street.
Or in the sewers.
Or the sewers. Alright. And on to Old Misses, we still have ordinance one fifty-one twenty-two. I think the last time we talked about that, they were, uh, you tried to contact someone?
And there's no movement on that as of yet.
Alright. Uh, one, two, uh, let's see, for the fifth reading, Resolution one thirty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one thirty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, I think, uh, we're still trying to decide, uh, if we're going to make these funds available to the Parks and Rec there at Mary Mack, I haven't heard. Okay.
Yeah, we would, we would just ask that you leave it on just one more time, and then, um, Lanning can give an update at his, uh, committee report, and then, um, but if you haven't been down to Mary Mack, go down there and check it out, because the fields are really starting to look real good, so.
He might want to send something, we'll have another meeting before the next committee meeting.
Alright, thank you. On for the third reading, Resolution one fifty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one fifty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution designating the Madison County Land Reutilization Corporation to act on behalf of and in cooperation with the city pursuant to sections five seven two-two dot zero two to fifty-seven twenty-two dot one five of the Ohio Revised Code, and authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement to facilitate the effective reutilization of non-productive land situated within the corporation limits.
Okay, so this is, um, this legislation involves the city and county entering into a partnership to participate in the land reutilization program, and, uh, uh, that was kind of detailed last meeting, but it basically involves, uh, taking properties that are, uh, foreclosed on or rundown, so that they can be repurposed and be useful as far as generating tax revenue or improving the appearances of the city.
And again, I think this is a, a wonderful tool that the city and the county will be able to use, uh, because there are properties out there that will definitely fit this category, and they've been there for, for years and years and years, they've been on the list for the revitalization committees and, uh, and, and for various groups for, for a long time, so this actually gives, uh, the county and the city, uh, an avenue to be able to remedy a lot of those properties.
So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Alright, we have a first and second for adoption, Clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Ead.
Yes.
Councilman Peters.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilman Stahl.
Yes.
Alright, Resolution one fifty-five twenty-three has been adopted. Onto ordinance one fifty-six twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance one fifty-six dash twenty-three, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, and ordinance amending section fourteen seventy-nine of the codified ordinances.
So this adds, uh, to an ordinance to allow the city to participate in that, in the program that we mentioned, in the land reutilization program. Um, it basically just adds that as a codified ordinance.
Okay, what are our wishes here, or any questions on that?
They can make a motion to adopt.
Second.
First and second for adoption, Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Ead.
Yes.
Councilman Peters.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilman Stahl.
Yes.
Alright, one fifty-six twenty-three has been adopted. Onto our new business, Resolution one sixty-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one sixty-one dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriation.
So we did have a squad that was damaged in an accident, I believe during the winter time, we've now received money from the insurance company for the repairs. We, that goes to believe to the general fund, we need to put that in to a fund that it can be used for the repair of the, the vehicle, sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars is that amount. Uh, our Safety Service Director mentioned, and I don't know if this was changed, to include a two fifty that you thought was for the deductible, we shouldn't have had a deductible. We have a deductible? Okay, was that included in this amount now? No, so. Okay, so this is, if, if there is a five hundred dollar deductible, that's not included here, so this is sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars to pay our part, or the, from the insurance company, the five hundred dollar deductible, sounds like it's going to be paid right out of their fund, so that we can get the squad back on the road.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Alright, what are our wishes here?
I'm making a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Ead.
Yes.
Councilman Peters.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilman Stahl.
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
Alright, first and second for adoption, Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Ead.
Yes.
Councilman Peters.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilman Stahl.
Yes.
Alright, Resolution one sixty-two twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one sixty-two dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Alright, every year, uh, the city must pay the county for building and zoning fees, uh, so this year we have exceeded their original appropriation, and, uh, we need to appropriate five thousand more to, uh, fees permits and building inspector.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, so what was our original appropriation, do we know?
I believe it was five thousand dollars.
So it was five thousand dollars, and we went through that in less than five months, or roughly five months.
There's been, you know, if, if you go out to the truck stop area, you can see a lot of construction going on. Um, that generates a lot of fees for, uh, zoning permits and so forth, and we pay, we collect those, and then we pay a percentage to the county. Um, it, we assume there's going to be more construction happening, but I don't think it's going to be on as large a scale for the rest of the year.
Wait a minute, you've, you've lost, we collect money?
Our Building and Zoning Department handles building and zoning for the, for the county, so we collect that money, and then the county gets a portion of that.
Is it truly our building department, or is it West Jeffs?
For, I'm sorry?
Is it truly our building and zoning, or is it West Jeffs Building and Zoning, don't we contract with them?
It runs through us, so I guess it would be through our Building and Zoning Department.
Okay, so we.
And it's for commercial buildings only.
So we, so we've.
The city of London does the commercials.
Okay.
The city of London, I believe, the way it, it's read is, yes, we contract with West Jefferson for our Building and Zoning Department, and I believe before we even did that, we had a contract with the county that we collect for the commercial in the county that's, um, unincorporated. And so, the, we're actually making money by doing this, so we make money and then we give them a portion of it.
Okay, so we.
So they contract with us for their commercial building and zoning.
So we've collected more than five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Probably considerably more than five thousand dollars.
Well, don't tell nobody, but yeah, yes. Well, don't tell nobody. But yeah, yes. No, yeah, that's, that's how it works.
So we thought we were only going to only have enough this year that we appropriated five thousand dollars. We've exceeded now. Now we need to put more. Is five thousand dollars going to be enough?
We believe so because like Rex said, it was kind of, there was just some big projects at the beginning of the year, so.
If you don't feel it's going to be enough, let's bump it up now. We don't have to come back at the end of the year, we hope.
We feel it's sufficient. I mean, if you'd like to put more money in it, but we feel it's sufficient. That's what came from Tom Hale, so. And we feel he's accurate on what it'll be. Because like I said, we, we only budget five thousand because that's really, we do less than five thousand every year. So doubling it should get us through.
Okay.
All right, what are our wishes here?
I make a motion to suspend a three reading rule on it.
Second.
All right, we have a first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Ead?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Moved or adopt?
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Ead?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right, resolution one sixty-three twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one sixty-three dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, we need to, needed to reappropriate this money from, that was approved last year, um, since it wasn't encumbered. So, um, we gotta reappropriate it for this year. This was, uh, work done there at County Park, the electrical work.
Have they already done it? I don't think they've done it. Nope. They may have done part of it, but they haven't done.
It's not done yet.
Okay.
When do they think they'll be done?
As soon as we appropriate the money for them to do the project, I would assume they'd be done this summer. The big holdup, and that's the reason I didn't encumber the money, was we were waiting on Ohio Edison to put in their, their portion of this, that held the electrician up. And it was delayed till this year. They, Ohio Edison has completed that portion, so he's ready to do his thing.
All right.
It was forty-five thousand, right?
Okay, what are our wishes here?
I'm making a motion to suspend three reading.
I'll second it.
Okay, first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Ead?
You're gonna start with me. I mean, you changed it up, yeah.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved or adopt?
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Ead?
Yes.
Resolution one sixty-four twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one sixty-four dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing, increasing appropriations.
Now, this is for the Safe Routes for Schools Walking Path. Um, we're in charge of maintaining that. And, uh, this year we are going to, uh, do just that. So Safe Routes for Schools and Walking Path need repairs and, uh, the available funds must be reappropriated prior to expenditure. And this will be for twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, and this does have an emergency clause as well. We want those businesses to be safe.
So I was just, uh, I didn't really realize what that was. These are the paved paths that are running along Elm Street over by the school, correct?
Elm Street and Kenny.
Mm-hmm. And Kenny?
Yeah.
Okay, down through there, yeah. And, um, it appears, just because I was reading legislation last night, that those are supposed to be ten feet wide or maintained at ten feet wide. Is that right?
Yeah, it's definitely ten feet wide.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, we're not, we're not expanding them or anything. We're just basically going to repla- replace any places that's deteriorated and needs to be fixed. And then we're going to-
Seal it.
Seal coat.
Did we also maintain the lighting along that path too?
No, that's Ohio Edison.
That's Ohio Edison, yeah.
No light poles or anything?
Right.
For some reason, I remember some lighting or something with the-
No, it was all, the thing was always that, uh, the, the speed thing out there. That was always-
Oh, yeah, that wouldn't ever work.
Who's in charge of the speed thing, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, what are our wishes here?
Make a motion to suspend the three reading.
Second.
All right, first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Ead?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved or adopt?
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Robin?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Ead?
Yes.
Resolution one sixty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one sixty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Now, this is, uh, for a new website for the city. It's a website and a, basically a mobile app, um, that we will be doing. I would like the mayor to talk about this a little bit, if you would, please.
So, you know, we've all talked about it. You guys have talked about it, about, you know, trying to get information out to the people as much as possible. And this is actually the same company, the school uses for their app. So I was in discussions with them. One is a new website. Um, our website is nice, but, uh, this will have, they have their own programming. One is called Thrill Share where if we put something out on the website, it would go to the app, it would go to our social media pages, things like that. Another thing it would be able to do is that each page would, in a sense, have their own admin. So the city council page would be controlled by city council. City council could put whatever they want on it, how they want to do it, how they want to set it up. Tax Department, Board of Public Utilities, everybody will have their own, um, accessibility to their page to be able to update it and keep it going. And then the app, like we talked about, I mean, Chief Nickel just talked about how many downloads they have on their app so far. You know, I think it's a good way to help get out information, um, especially with push notifications. So, um, you guys have, I know Greg has sent some questions and we got, and maybe Henry too, I can't remember. But we got, got all those questions answered, gave you guys the presentation, um, for the company. The company is called App to G, so. It's about him.
Just so you know, this is, uh, the cost of this is fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Seven thousand of that is the one-time fee is setting it up and then, uh, then the annual fee of seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars thereafter.
We didn't get an answer before. Do we know what we're currently paying for the website?
I do not know that off the top of my head because Amy built that website. So our administrative assistant built that website and she maintains it all, which is, you know, most cities have a HR person or an IT person that maintains the websites. And Amy's trying to do that and do everything else too. Um, but I do not know that number off the top of my head. I could tell you it's not that much.
The cost of the program, I believe, is six hundred and ninety-five dollars annually. It's renewable. And then that I, and then I think that includes hosting. So this is substantially more, but again, uh, they're going to set it up to where multiple people can administer it as opposed to just one person. They'll get it all set up for us. That's what that initial seven thousand dollars is for. And you're paying for upgrades for apps, which apps, if you have a phone, you know, you upgrade your apps all the time. So you're paying for all the upgrades on apps that's going to happen. And the integration, to be able to integrate between the website, the app, Facebook, uh, Twitter, all the social media apps to be posted with just one post on, uh, one person posting it. It's going to be a substantial time saver and be able to get things posted quickly and maybe not forget to put something on one app where we do it on others.
And was that, that was, Amy created that through the city or is that through another business that she has or?
No, that was through the city. Well, I think the hope is that this was going to improve communications with citizens of London by having that mobile app. I'm not sure that that's really going to help those people that aren't inclined to use today's technology anyway. Those are the people who come here and say, I don't know anything because we don't have a paper, right? I don't know if this really helps them, although you guys have presented that you feel that even most of those folks who may not really care for technology now have smartphones and that they want to download the app that they can and that you think that'll help them. I do like the fact that it'll let our clerk post information. Um, again, I think it'll be, um, up to each department on what they post and whether it's really, really used or not. We are going to now pay ten times as much as we were before. I will say this, and I'd said it in an earlier meeting, I did reach out to a local web designer and she thought the price was very reasonable. Again, it depends on how we decide to use it or the, each department decides to use it. How those departments are going to pass along the information, that remains to be seen. I hope that it's used as well as they would like it to be. And then, um, you know, I, I personally would like to just leave this on for one more reading just so people hear about it before, uh, we vote on it. Maybe they come to a meeting, maybe they have input or questions that I haven't, we haven't answered yet.
I got a question. Um, Police Department, are they using their own? Would they join this?
No, no.
So they're gonna have their-
They, they would still have their own separate for safety services. So we wouldn't want, we don't want to bog somebody down, but with this app, we would be able to do more, you know, hey, this meeting's coming up, right? Police use theirs more for, hey, there's a road closure. We would also do that, but we would have, I assume, more stuff on our app, more posts, I should say.
Now, the app that the, uh, Police Department uses, are they able to have the same capacity as this app would have? Or is that a totally different type of setup that they use? Separate, so that company that they use cannot do this?
The company that they use?
Yeah, the app that they use, they don't, they're not able to do this?
Yeah, I mean, I assume, I assume they could, um.
This would be two different things though, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, so I wonder if you have more than one thing-
This is a website and an app?
Yeah.
Where theirs is just an app.
Theirs is just the app.
So what I'm saying is they, they currently have just the app, but is their app able to do a website as well? That, what they have right now. You know, I'm just saying because I know if we have more than one, you know, entity going through a certain business, they may be, you know, more apt to give us a better price. If we have, you know, say the city all of a sudden needs a site through there as well as an app, and then they're also using our Police Department as well. You know, I just wonder if they're able to do the same thing with the app that we currently use with the Police Department.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Okay, yeah, because that would be good to know if they can do that and what type of pricing they would give us for giving them, uh, multiple streams of business. Okay, any other questions here on one sixty-five twenty-three? All right, one, two, resolution one sixty-six twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one sixty-six dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads. A resolution declaring the official intent and responsible, a reasonable expectation of the City of London on behalf of the State of Ohio, the borough, to reimburse its sewer six-six-zero fund for the C K fifteen Y W T P sludge dewatering replacement with the proceeds of tax exempt debt of the State of Ohio.
Okay, key words, reasonable expectation to reimburse the sewer fund from the other fund. So I had a question and, and, uh, I'm going to give the auditor credit. I emailed her this afternoon. She was already gone. She did take the time to email me back. And if anybody wants to see the contract, I can forward that copy to you about this. But we have to go in the Wayback Machine. Last year, uh, I think it was in August, we approved advertising and bids for this, uh, piece of equipment with no greater than one million and seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And we were expecting to pay eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand roughly for this, if you remember that. So this is actually, I believe, the, the, the piece of legislation that says that the state is going to reimburse this for their, their half. And in her, she gave me the really long, uh, ex, well, not the explanation, but the contract, but it says I've attached the loan agreement. But this is what we all need to know. Half is local resources, the other half is the O P W C funds. So that's, that's what this is because it was a little confusing.
All right. All right, any further discussion on, uh, one sixty-six twenty-three? All right, and this does have, uh, the emergency clause on this.
I'm gonna make a motion to suspend it, three reading rule.
All right, first and second for suspension. Clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Ead?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved or adopt?
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Ead?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right, ordinance one sixty-seven twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one sixty-seven dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters and ordinance amending the policy and procedure manual.
Yeah, they're, they're just going through and updating everything through that manual. Pretty much like the administration and department heads and stuff like that. Or some of the other things.
It looked like some, uh, for like time off and, um, military leave, things like that.
It's just like a working document. So every year, things change, right? The world changes, things change. We need to update things. So, uh, the auditor and the law director get together, they start working on it, start going through the whole thing. Seeing what needs to be updated, what needs to be changed, and they bring it to our office and we go through it. And then that's the changes you see in front of you today.
Didn't you go through your, uh, what's the, uh, the company use? What's, we used, uh, Clemmons Nelson. Clemmons Nelson.
Clemmons Nelson.
Okay. So they actually had a review of that also? Yes. And you said it was really their recommendations, probably based on what you guys came up with? What we came up with and also, uh, looking through the contracts, we kind of make the, that mirror the contracts so that there's no dispute in one document doing something different than another one. Okay, and just for clarification, because everybody's not at the other meetings, I did ask Mr. Castle if these, if this document was reviewed by department heads and whether this was in unions and if there was any pushback from anybody. And at that time, he indicated there was not any pushback. People had looked at it. And we did receive this via email probably two months ago.
It's been quite a while, yeah, initially.
Yeah, initially. Do you think it's been two months since you emailed it? Oh, yeah. Probably so? Yeah. Okay.
All right, this does not have an emergency clause. We want to just leave that on there. No rush for that. Okay, on to resolution one sixty-eight twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one sixty-eight dash twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes. A resolution, a resolution authorizing the advertisement for bids for the personal property no longer needed for city purposes.
Uh, this talks about, uh, this is a city-owned truck. It's a two thousand and three Ford F-one-fifty. Uh, said property is no longer needed by the city for its purposes. And the city wishes to dispose of the property in accordance with law. and the city wishes to dispose of the property in accordance with law through a bidding process.
All right, any further discussion on that, it's a pretty old truck, so wanna get that out there as soon as we can. And this does have a emergency clause on it.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption, clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right, resolution one sixty-nine twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one sixty-nine dash twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes. A resolution authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to repair the basement at the water plant with a cost in, in excess of the twenty-five thousand dollar limitation.
Yes, if memory serves me correctly, the bid comment on this, I believe it was thirty-four thousand dollars? Thirty-two thousand, okay, I'm sorry. I, I, you're right, I read the wrong one. Okay, so we have to move upon this to send it along.
Did we already, did we bid that or they just asked for private bids up front?
So it's under fifty thousand, but we were getting quotes on it, is what we did. So it needs repaired though.
What, do they have water damage coming in there?
No, it's just, old buildings start to settle, you know, and if, you ever seen some old basements? They start to...
Couple of them.
Yeah, they start, you know.
Caving in.
Yeah, I mean, it's not caved in, I don't wanna give you the wrong idea that it's all caved in down there. But if we don't do something about it, there could be some issues down the road. So the sooner the better in our eyes.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
Okay, first and second for suspension, clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes, I've been waiting to do this, move to adopt.
Second.
Get a second on this end.
You got two seconds. Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
I think y'all need to calm down now. On to resolution one seventy twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one seventy dash twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes. A resolution authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to make repairs to the recycle tank with a cost in excess of the twenty-five thousand dollar limit.
Okay, this bid committed thirty-four thousand dollars, so we have to move on this also.
What exactly are we doing? Out of curiosity.
To the recycle tank?
Yeah.
New pipe and railing for the pump? Okay, is it replacing the old things or is it something? All right, replacing existing pipes and pump?
Taking it's in bad shape.
It's in bad shape? All right.
I'll make a motion to suspend three reading rule?
I'll second it.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Resolution one seventy-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one seventy-one dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters. A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for paving of Sheffield and Oxley Drive.
Yes, Sheffield and Oxley Drive, it was supposed to be completed by the contractor originally, but that contractor is no longer in business who did that development, so we have to take care of that. It's just a top coat finish surface for those two roads. So we gotta put this out the bid and hopefully get that done this year. And that would be not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Any discussion, yes?
Do we remember how much it was last year? I, I don't remember what we appropriated last year. This is more, we think, right? A year later, it's more? Oh, okay. So, and I, I do have a discussion I'd like to have about this, and that is, I don't, it doesn't appear that we make builders get a bond, a completion bond. If they don't, so in many construction jobs, the builder has to pay for a bond. It says if they don't complete the job, the money's available to complete the job, right? Well, I think that we should, because we're gonna have other builders, there's lots of things that are gonna go on. If they don't complete the job, we're stuck paying for this. And we shouldn't be stuck paying for this, we should really consider as part of that package when they bid that they have to get a bond in favor of the City of London so that if this happens again, we collect something from that. It may not be enough, we can ask for them to get a bond for fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars. Even if that's not enough, that's better than us paying the entire fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. And that's a normal part of business for contractors. It's not part of this ordinance and obviously I think we're gonna do that, but I think for, for further discussion whether it is, whether it should go to, I don't know which committee it should go to specifically, but I think it should probably come up and maybe we should look into that for future references.
Just asked, Councilman Eads just asked to put it on the safety agenda? Cuz that's, that's where we give our building updates, right?
We can do that.
That's a good idea, add that in there. I'm glad you know about that.
I do, Mr. Castle does too.
All right. Okay, what are our wishes here?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
All right, first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, resolution one seventy-two twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one seventy-two dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters. A resolution, excuse me, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for pavement repairs at City Hall.
Yeah, this is for, where the old boiler room used to be and then the driveway to the parking lot here off of First Street needs a little help as well, so the bids and contract not to exceed eighty-eight thousand dollars.
How much was that again?
Eighty-eight thousand.
Okay.
So that's the driveway right beside this building, as you, where you go into the, the drop box for the Board of Public Utilities, on the far side of the driveway by the building? Wasn't that damaged? That was?
So, yeah, there's a little section here, the boiler room.
Where it's, where it's gone now.
Where it's gone.
Now, that was down in an area, are, are, are we gonna build that up at all? So they're gonna bring that so it's more level and it's not down in that hole? And that was where the boiler room was?
So that's taken out dirt and put it in, you said three oh four, and fill that back in, okay.
And, do we have drainage over there too, is that buried or is that gonna have to be replaced? Okay.
All right, what are our wishes here, this has a emergency clause?
Make a mo, go ahead. Okay, make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Age before being.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption, clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance one seventy-three twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one seventy-three dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stahl. An ordinance amending section twelve twenty-eight of the codified ordinances.
This has to deal with new subdivisions only, having sidewalks instead of five foot, four foot.
All right, and I see the attachment here and that's the only thing that's changed from five feet to four feet. And that's gonna...
So what is driving this? I mean, why, why would we need to change this? Who's asking for this? Why did it come before whoever it came before?
Our code enforcer, Steve Hume, who used to be Safety Service Director here, was dead set sure that they were five feet, all development should be. And then upon researching, he saw where plans that came in for the past ten years or more were four feet. And he's done some research, I believe him, and basically it's industry standard that it's four feet. So rather than have that in there and him having to double check it all the time, he'd rather have it four feet.
So it's on, and it's only gonna be new construction from this point forward?
Yes.
If anybody's gonna replace their sidewalk, they're, they're not gonna get the benefit of going to four feet instead of five?
Well, it would be kinda weird to have your sidewalk about four feet into a five-foot sidewalk. So, yes, if you, if you dig out a five-foot sidewalk, you're gonna replace it five foot.
Okay.
Okay.
So, hold on. Are you sure this is right? And the reason I ask is that if the minimum width of sidewalk shall be five, now four, feet, does this section twelve twenty-eight oh four only apply to new builds? Or is this?
Yes, I believe that that is a section that talks about subdivisions.
So it's only, only the new builds and we're not gonna change that in any existing legislation? Just asking because if it, if it applies to all sidewalks, then that guy who does have the five-foot sidewalk can butt his four-foot sidewalk up to his neighbor's five foot?
Well, that, that code enforcement is in the new development section. I hope that somebody doesn't try to reference new build for an existing sidewalk, existing subdivision. And if I think, if you go back and look, I don't think there's any, I think it says that you're to replace with like-kind whenever you have your sidewalk replaced. I don't think there's any with descriptions in that section when it talks about maintaining sidewalks. Cuz that was, that was a concern, that we didn't want people that had sidewalks tear out a ten, a five-foot or, or a ten-foot and put a four-foot sidewalk in. So it's only in the, it's only in the new construction section of our code.
Well, give me a quick second, unless you guys have it in front of you, I just wanna pull up the ordinance and make sure what section twelve twenty-eight is, that's all I'm really worried about at this point. Planning, zoning, code, okay. So all of this does have to do with new construction, subdivision regulations. Thank you very much.
Okay, what are our wishes here?
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
Let me take a look here, it's one seventy-three twenty-three. And there's not an emergency clause on this one. Unless I've skipped to a next one, it's, is it one seventy-three twenty-three, correct?
Yes.
There's, yeah, there's no emergency clause.
No emergency on it, okay.
So we can leave this one on for further discussion? Or do you want? That we'd have to amend it?
No, it's just a, it's just a suspension.
Okay.
So, so a suspension is just suspending the three reading rules, the emergency makes it go into effect immediately.
So, all right, and we wanna suspend that, then we have first and second. Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
No.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption, clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Ordinance one seventy-four twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one seventy-four dash twenty-three, sponsored by Andrew Hitt. An ordinance amending section twelve forty-eight of the codified ordinances.
So this involves changing the minimum size of garages for new developments, is that right? From six hundred forty square feet to four hundred and eighty square feet? And that, I guess, is to help prevent needing to go to the horizontal field for variances?
Excuse me? To, to take it down in size, you would have to get a variance to take it down in size, not up in size? Yeah. Okay.
So this would make the size smaller so that variances wouldn't be as, required as much?
Yeah, it's minimum, so they won't have to come to a variance to make it smaller. If they wanna make it bigger, they're allowed, so we're setting the minimum size. Steve Hume and I discussed this and he said that the person that put that into the codifieds probably was a little too overzealous in wanting a great big huge garage. It shouldn't have probably been that big because the home size, it was six hundred some square feet and the minimum size of a home, I believe, it's thirteen hundred or twelve hundred square feet.
Now?
Yes. Under some, I think it was under R two, they were that small. So, minimum size and, you know, when your garage is almost half as big as your house, that's kinda a little too big. It makes it a little lopsided. And we did have a developer to come in and ask for a variance to move it down to a smaller size.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
All right, first and second for suspension, clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
No.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right. Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
I don't, I don't believe it's adopted.
Wait a minute.
I don't, it has to stay on.
That's right, one, two, okay, gotcha. All right. One, two. You got it? Okay, one, two, ordinance one seventy-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one seventy-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stahl. An ordinance amending section four fifty-two of the codified ordinances.
This is to have a one-hour parking sign from eight to five, Monday to Friday, on an insurance business at the corner of Fourth Street and a union.
My, my question is, with a, with a business located in that, on a street, that doesn't have its own parking, are they required to have a certain amount of parking spots? Cuz I know, I've ran into it before where they said, okay, you have to have this many parking spots for your, for your business Cause I know, I've ran into it before where they said, okay, you have to have this many parking spots for your, for your business, and we've had to create parking spots. But we have access to an alley, so we had to create four additional, uh, parking spots to make sure that we had them for our employees. So what I'm saying is, I know that oftentimes businesses have to have a certain amount of parking spots. Now, then I do, you know, we moved and have another business, and we have only one street parking. So I know we share that, especially with the, uh, the church across the street when they have funerals, things like that. And sometimes we just get to park, you know, about a block or so away, because we all share that one street parking.
Well, in, in the case of this business, I would assume that that has been a business before he came in and put a business in there. So it would've been probably grandfathered in, uh, it's not treated like it's a new business, follow what I'm saying?
So, Grant, so before there was parking appropriated for that business, that was there before?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I don't know if I've heard that part before.
That was Laundergen, right?
Yes.
And how many spots did he have, originally?
I have no idea. I mean, I guess he may do with what was there. The, the predicament we're in is caused by the amount of cars being repaired at an auto repair shop, taking up both citizen or residence parking spaces and other businesses' parking spaces, McDonald's, so forth. So, that's why this was brought by the gentleman here, is because he's seen these cars parked, uh, for extent, for an extended period of time, more than days even.
Do we have pictures? Because I've been by there multiple times since this has been brought up. I haven't seen anything parked over there. Do you have any pictures of that? Cause I, I mean, for last week and a half, I've been by there and there hasn't been a car on that side, either side of the road, that whole corner.
I, I do not have any pictures. I, I, I have been through there and seen the amount of cars that sits there. And I know that this has been an ongoing issue, I don't know, over a year. Now, when was the last time we had something come in here with-
Right, and I think last time, one of the largest discussions we had on it is, it's just, it's city parking, it's on the street city parking. And if anything, it should be regulated by the city, not, you know, used as a, a per- you know, use public parking on the streets as a personal businesses or residences parking.
Yeah, the, this is just me talking, but I think the big issue is that the regulations and the changes in which we can, we have an ordinance that says a car has to move every seventy-two hours. And I believe that we're not allowed to mark cars anymore like you used to. You can't, used to, you could put a, put a chalk mark on a tire, and you could put a chalk mark on there, and you can tell they, we're not allowed to do that. Ohio changed their law, uh, codes that says we're not allowed to do that. So now it's very hard to say a car's set there pr- longer than seventy-two hours to ticket them, so.
So if the car's sitting there more than an hour, how do you verify that, or how do you?
Well, it's gonna be easier to sit there and observe for an hour than it would be for seventy-two hours, so.
We wouldn't really send anybody there to watch for an hour.
I would say he would drive by, see if the car's sitting there, and then next time he comes by, if it's still sitting there, he'll issue a ticket, he'll have to.
That would be a real waste of-
I think, I think also that would be, and I think that this is, it kind of, you know, going into a, maybe a territory that maybe we shouldn't go into, because it's regulating specifically for a, you know, like a personal business on the city streets. I think if anything, you know, maybe we should look at the regulation of when cars should be, you know, in a certain area during a certain time for a public street, and not necessarily for private business purposes. Because then you're, you know, you're gonna put signs up for a private business purposes on public streets. So, like, when we have the strawberry festival, I, you know, if cars are parked in front of, say, my house or someone's house that's close to the strawberry festival, this, you know, it's just where they are, you can't really move them, cause it's a public street and they can park there if they so deem necessary.
Well, I, and I agree with that, that I can't control who parks in front of my house. I may not like it that my neighbor decides to own seven vehicles and park two of them in front of my house, and then I can't park, I may not like that. But this is a residential district for all intents and purposes. So, this doesn't benefit the residents there at all, I don't think. Because we're really pointing at, and just like we did last year, or you did last year, I didn't point the finger, at Mr. Khan. And you, you changed the parking beside, uh, right there on, uh, Union Street beside McDonald's to try to limit whether he put cars there or his customers put cars there. So, like, once again, I think we're taking a shot at a different business to benefit, one. I believe that this business has off-street parking, at least for your customers or your employees. Is that true, Mr. Gassell? Do you have off-street parking?
We have two parking spots in the driveway, and that's it.
Okay. Have, do we know, have there been any complaints from residents specifically? Not, not to you, Mr. Gassell, but to the city? Have, do, do we have any complaints from citizens about this specifically? Okay, and then the biggest thing that I have is, why would we allow a one hour parking area in that one space when the entire downtown is two hours?
All right. If we did regulate it at all, you know? Because I even have, you know, instances where there's other businesses, y- you know, in the area, and they use, you know, what would be, like, be my parking spots in my area. But I can't, you know, really do anything about it, because it's public parking and they can park wherever they wanna park. Mister-
I just wondered, have you talked to Mr. Khan at all to see if he's, he would be, accommodate you and not park in that spot, or?
We, we do talk to him frequently.
If you could use the microphone, please. If you could use a microphone, please, so we can hear you on the recording, thank you. Yes, thanks.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes. They're very sensitive mics.
Mr. Khan, uh, does the best that he can. I'm, I'm not sure who asked that question.
I did.
Uh, he does do the best he can. Um, there's times where he just gets too busy to try to control what happens there. He'll have customers come in and drop their cars before he even opens, and then they just sit there and sit there and sit there. Um, or he'll move a car, but when he moves the car, because the residents all up and down the road have their parking spots occupied, then the residents will move in. So it's, it's a constant rotation of vehicles in and out of those spaces. We just can't keep it, can't keep it open.
So even if he wasn't to park there, someone else would move into that spot and take it?
Yeah, it, it's just constant.
I've been by there three times myself also, and I've only seen one car parked along Fourth Street.
Yeah, the last, the last week has been better. I don't know if Mr. Khan's business is slow right now with, with traveling, or whether word got to him that there's discussion being held within the council, so he's trying to do a little bit, I, I don't know. But I have noticed a difference in the last week. But there are many instances in which vehicles have sat there for weeks and months and never been moved. Right in front of my place of business.
Yeah.
And all up and down the road, and the residents do complain, uh, but they complain to me. Tell me how upset they are about it, but apparently they haven't taken, taken it to council. But, uh, who wouldn't complain? You know, you, when you can't park in place, in front of your place of residence.
The cars that are parked there for weeks or months, are those Khan's cars, or are they?
Oh, yeah.
Residents, or?
Yeah, Mr. Khan's vehicles.
I think this is actually, this, to me, seems as if it's a different discussion, because if there's people coming to your business and they park there, and then they move, and then a resident comes in and park there, and they move, and it happens, and it's continuous, it should be, because it's a public street. So, you know, people can use a public street for parking, for residence, for, you know, just so happens your business is in a residential area, and you know, it's on-street parking, it's open to the public, and it should be open to the public. I think if it's not open to the public, then it's not a public street. And I think if we open this up to, uh, use the ability of the city to, you know, allow a, a personal business a sign to, you know, stop people from parking in a public street, that we may open up the door for, you know, other requests for the city to, to, you know, who knows what, what could happen, but I just don't think that, um, you know, because the public street is taken in front of your business, I don't think that we should regulate, you know, parking. And if there's an issue of, you know, a, a business that parks cars and the cars are there all the time, then that's a different issue. And I think that that should be handled by whatever ordinances that we currently have on the books, uh, for people parking too long on the street. But, you know, to, uh, single out a, a business and allow them, uh, their own personal parking spots on a public street, I'm not sure this is the forum that we should have for that. Those are my thoughts.
Well, I think you make a valid point, sir, in that, uh, you know, when I spoke to London P D about it, they, they said to me that, and this is going back, Pat, you know, a year and a half, I think, well, ye- a year, a year. And I don't know what the ordinance says, but I believe London P D said that, that there should not be any public parking of a commercial, you know, Mr. Khan's vehicle should not be allowed on the street at all. Uh, and he told me that they try to tow vehicles away, and, and who wants to be the guy that's getting people's cars towed away, you know? I, I, Mr. Khan's got a bad situation, he really does. And, uh, the, the ordinance, whatever it is, I can assure you of not being enforced. There's been efforts to try to do so over the years, and it's been sporadic at best, and it just, it's just a problem, but anyway, that's why I'm here, and, uh, appreciate your consideration. Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. So what are our wishes here? Want to leave this on, or what?
I, I would prefer we leave it on. I think the residents in that area might have, um, some input.
You may wanna hear from Mr. Khan, let him know that we're discussing this.
And this is the first time that this has come up as an actual piece of legislation, either Mr. Gassell was here earlier. This is the first time it's officially come before council.
Exactly, all right. And I agree too, we should leave that on and, and, and to be sure to allow plenty of time, especially if Mr. Khan decides to, to come through, or, you know, if any other residents or, or, or anyone, you know, has any other issues with, you know, people parking in a public parking space. All right, on to ordinance one seventy-six twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one seventy-six dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stahl, an ordinance amending section four five four of the codified ordinances.
This kinda goes along with the others, change, you're making that twenty-five dollar fine.
For the parking on the street?
For more than one hour on Fourth Street, and as Mr. Eads said, uh, other places in the city have a, at least a two hour parking. You know, on the, the areas that we have labeled as, you know, a place to limit parking, they're, they're, uh, listed as a two hour parking, so this would be kind of extraordinary to allow just a one hour parking in this area, which could, you know, be a, you know, excessive use of, you know, the police resources to watch a certain parking spot for one hour, you know, to, to time that.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
May I speak? I would have no objection to it being a two hour parking, to, to keep things consistent. I think whether it's one hour or two hour, it's just letting people know, don't be here all day, don't be here for weeks on end, don't be here for a month. Cause there are vehicles that sit out there for months on end, so. If, if two hours makes it more agreeable to everyone, by all means, I, I, I could care less. I think a sign there just sends a message to the habitual abusers that take up space and do it for weeks on end, that, don't do that anymore.
Okay, and then the two hour parking spots, those are in commercial areas, correct? They're not in residential's area, thank you. So the, the two hour parking restrictions that we do have, those are in commercial areas. So this is a request for time constrained, constricted, uh, restricted parking in a residential area. So, you know, kinda commercial, I understand, it's all businesses. But, you know, for a residential area where your house is at or something, you could have, uh, a Christmas party and your family's there, you know, for the whole weekend, and they, they don't leave, you know, so.
Well, un- unfortunately, where his business is, sits two churches.
Yes, right, by the church.
And this is supposed to be Monday through Friday, I'm sure, but, uh, but, you know.
Our church has meeting, we had meeting last night at our church there, at, uh, we had a meeting last night at our church, and sometimes our meetings last la- longer than an hour, so we may have church members parked there on the street for longer than an hour in a church meeting.
And they have- And as Rex just pointed out, it's eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
So it's very specific in that, but, but with two churches there, you, there's funerals.
Yeah, we have funerals, we have-
Unfortunately.
And there's two churches there, there's the Lutheran Church, there's the Methodist Church.
Right.
You know, so there's multiple, uh, churches, and it, it's a residential area with the public parking. So, uh, this is requesting, uh, so we wanna leave this on as well?
Leave it on in conjunction with the other.
All right, thank you. One, two, ordinance one seventy-seven twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number one seven seven dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, an ordinance to increase the municipal income tax by twenty-five hundredth of a percent, zero point two five percent per annum, annum? Uh, and, um, for a continuing period of time, commencing January first, twenty twenty-four, on which increase one quarter of one percent per, um, annum. Sorry, I need my glasses. Shall be used for the purposes, providing funds to pay costs of acquiring, constructing, finishing, equipping, improving, maintaining, and repairing municipal fire department facilities, to pay general operating expenses of the fire department, and to pay any expenses and debt service charges for debt incurred in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
So this is, uh, to put the fire department, um, funding on the levy again in November. Wish we could reword this a little bit. But this would be for only the fire department funding. It wouldn't go to any other departments or anything throughout the city.
All right, and what, uh, how's, when does this need to, uh, do we need to put this into action by, is there a certain amount of days before the, uh, election that we need, or?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
It can go three readings.
Right, and we have plenty of time, correct? Okay. All right, what are our wishes here? Leave this one? All right, any discussion? All right, moving on to resolution one seven three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one seventy-eight dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution to place the issue of increasing the municipal income tax by twenty-five hundredth of one percent, zero point two five percent, for a numb for continuing, and, um, contin- continuing a period of time as period provided in ordinance one seventy-seven dash twenty-three on the ballot at the election to be held on November seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and directing the board of elections of Madison County to conduct suck elections and declaring emergency.
So if we pass, uh, ordinance one seventy-seven twenty-three, then then we take it to, uh, Board of Elections, put it on the, put it on the ballot.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, not specifically on this, but to address the situation a little further, um, there were, there is a, uh, request for a recount that has been put forth. If it hasn't happened today, it's supposed to happen tomorrow. We talked about this at the finance meeting. I know Mr. Castle, I don't know if you wanna address this, or you want me to just continue on with this part? So, I was, I was told that, that the city itself could, uh, ask for the recount, but evidently that, th- there was two ways to do it. Either the city could, or a group of people could, that had to be qualified electors in City of London and all of that. So there were, there was a, uh, petition or a request, uh, my name's on it, Mr. Castle's name's on it, Joe Mosher and Sue Mosher, and Michael Norman put his name on that also. And there is a fee that had to be paid, and there's been donations towards the fee to have the recount. So we're hoping that that's accepted and there's an official recount. Before we go forward, we may not have to go forward with this, it, officially the, uh, count was a loss by eight votes. Before we go forward, we may not have to go forward with this. Officially, the account was a loss by eight votes. Um, so we're just, we're still hopeful that that may turn around, um, when there's a hand recount.
And when they recount that, they count all the votes, right? Cause I?
No.
Okay.
Well, now, I don't know.
Okay.
They didn't in my recount.
Right.
They only took one of the five voting precincts and counted those.
Instead of all of them.
But then they said, if this is good, then we're going to consider the, the entire vote good, but they still found an extra ballot. So I don't know how they considered it good, but they did and they did not hand recount all the ballots. If there is a request, if you can request, and I don't know that you can, a hand recount of all of the ballots in the City of London?
Well, here's the thing, the request was made for the total recount, all votes. Uh, the fees that are paid, you have to pay so much per precinct, so if I'm paying for that precinct for a recount, we're going to recount. The way I look at it.
And that may have been the difference because mine was an automatic recount and the, the board chose to follow that process where they only took one of the five precincts and counted that.
And I, and I believe we have to pay a deposit of sixty-five dollars per precinct. Then when they count it, I think it's, it's factored per, per vote, we pay so much per vote. We have to pay for supply costs, we have to pay for their personnel hourly time. So that should cover all that, is my understanding. So if we're going to pay per vote, I'm sure we're going to count them all.
Okay, so, and, and it's like you're saying, they will, every vote will be counted, not just per precinct, but every single vote recount.
That was, that was the request that's.
And that makes it a lot more accurate.
Well, I, I, one other part of my experience of what happened, and it did not affect me or Brenda Russell in any way, but while they were doing the re- the hand recount, so they took one precinct and then they, just very quickly, they, they split it up, so there was, let's say, three hundred ballots and a group of, one group of two people had twenty-five and one red and the other tallied and then they switched and as long as those matched, it was good. However, it didn't affect me, it didn't affect Brenda, it did affect Carla Blazer, who picked up eleven votes in one precinct because the circle as a write-in wasn't filled in correctly. Now, if they have to look at each one of these ballots, they may find some ballots that someone may have just put a dot in the circle and it doesn't automatically, it may not have automatically counted that, because it goes through a machine to count that. So that's a possibility that you're going to find ballots that weren't filled in correctly and it can go both ways. But, but at least they might find more votes than what were considered. Now, we only, we know there was only eleven undervotes, so it counted every vote except eleven. Was that the final number, eleven undervotes?
Okay, alright, any further discussion? Alright, on to roundtable, we'll begin, uh, with Mister Stahl.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Alright, thank you. Mister Hitt?
I have nothing.
Alright, Mister Hayes.
Okay, uh, safety meeting, uh, first of all, thanks for everybody coming out tonight. Uh, safety meeting, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, next room over. BPU meeting will be a, uh, different meeting, it'll be on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth at six thirty P M. Again, BPU meeting, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth at six thirty P M. This is National Police Week. I get very emotional with this, so I'm going to try to keep, we've lost a lot of police officers. If you see a police officer out there, you know, go up and at least shake his hand, tell him, thanks for taking care of you. They appreciate that. They go about your business and they don't ask for much, but man, if you walk up and just say, man, I appreciate you, I'm praying for you, appreciate the job you do, that means a heck of a lot and they, they enjoy getting that. Pray for safety of London, all of our citizens, ask the Lord to watch over us, keep us all safe, keep us all well. And I thank all my council members here, good bunch of guys, good bunch of guys, appreciate y'all. I want to thank everybody that voted for me, I wasn't here at the last meeting. Uh, I want to thank everybody that voted for me, I appreciate your vote and your confidence in me. Uh, I'm trying to do the best job I can, uh, I hope I do good in your eyes. That's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Mister Robinson?
Uh, I do not have anything.
Alright, Mister Peters?
I have nothing.
Mister Ead?
A couple of things, Mister Hayes, as our representative of Board of Utilities, I've had some people call me and ask me some questions. I don't know that you can answer the questions now, but maybe you will by our next meeting. They wanted, they're asking about updates on what we've approved in the past, right? So we have a water plant, where are we at with that water plant on East High Street? What about, have the loans been approved? Do we have construction timelines? I just think there's some people that paid attention to that and they would like some more information if you'd be willing to share that at the next meeting, please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next thing, um, I shared a, an article with one of the council members, I don't know that I shared it with the administration, I don't know if I thought to do that, uh, about Plain City, it was in the Dispatch, about the growth of Plain City.
I had to buy a subscription to open it fully, but I, I saw the gist of it, that they were going to grow significantly.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Four thousand to twenty-one thousand in the next.
Yeah, so they're, they're expecting to go up to twenty to like twenty-one thousand, I think in the next twenty years. But they're worried. They're, they're, and I think rightfully so, they're worried about what that's going to do and how that's going to change things and their school and I just, I, I only shared that just because they're ahead of the curve on us on this, because they're right up against Dublin. But we know builders are coming here and it's probably something we need to consider. Some of the thoughts and maybe some of the planning, uh, maybe it needs to be adjusted and changed. You know, as time goes on and try to get ahead of some of the things before it gets out of, out of control.
This sounds familiar.
Well, I'm just saying, that would, that article kind of brought it home. And the third thing is, and I know I shared this with the administration too, just when, uh, we had our, uh, finance meeting and we had the gentleman come in to discuss the abatements or a possible abatement for Kenny Station Apartments. And the thought was in everybody's head, but Rex is the one that said it, the school can lose out. And the discussion at that point was, well, the school doesn't have to be involved with this, but, and I, and I pointed out to him, well, part of that is maybe they don't have to be part of this discussion, but they're definitely going to be affected.
Alright.
Right, so I, I called the, the auditor's office, we di- I did the math that based on the abatement, if they, if they did abate the, the property, seventy-five percent, the school is going to lose fifty-five thousand dollars a year, the city's going to lose eighty-five hundred dollars a year. Even the public library and M R D D, I, there's lots of, there's lots of people that get paid out of this, but these were the four I think would affect the most people and they would lose those funds. And I'm not saying, we don't even have, we haven't moved forward with that, someone thought we killed this at that, at the meeting. We did not kill this, it hasn't actually become an official item of discussion. I mean, it's been discussed, but there was not any motion to either pass it or defeat it at that point. So right now, we're still in discussion stage about that.
Alright, and what were the final numbers there, over ten years, what would?
Well, I mean, so we're going to take the ten, the, then the yearly amount times ten. London City Schools would le- would lose five hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. The City of London would lose eighty-five thousand one hundred and forty dollars, the Public Library twenty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty and M R D D would lose sixty-three thousand two hundred and seventy over ten year period.
So that's, that's huge.
That's, that's very substantial.
That is substantial, even with seventy-five percent, not including the school, because it won't affect them, but apparently.
No, it will, it will affect them.
Yeah, well, but that's how it was presented.
Well, right, he kind of, he kind, I think he had that wrong. Now, I, I was going to ask, has anybody talked to the school specifically?
Before you move on, can I just say one thing? Because I think there might be a little bit of confusion. Well, what it is, it used to be that a city can give an abatement for ten years, for up to ten years, up to fifty percent without the school's approval. That, that's what they, they keep saying, they keep saying it's not going to affect the school that, I believe what they are trying to say is that they don't need the school's approval.
Right.
Because they've changed that now to ten years seventy-five percent. So they can go to a city, anybody can go to a city, get an abatement for up to ten years, up to seventy-five percent and the school does not have to approve it. Now, once you go over that seventy-five percent and do a ten year, a hundred percent, just like what happened with the last abatement we did, it came here, the school board got it, they had to approve it and then that's how it got approved. Now, someone might say to you, well, we're talking about money that's not there yet, right? Like, if, say this project doesn't even, if they doesn't, they don't get it, they don't build, right? It's, it's money we're talking about and we keep saying, we're going to lose this amount. If the project's built out, that's what we would lose. The biggest thing, when I wrote you guys emails and talked to you guys, is that if it is built and there's children that live in this apartment complex, they are going to be going to London City Schools. That's where the strain gets put on the schools, because like you said, we're, he, they're going to lose a half a million dollars over ten years and there's going to be new students go into those schools that those property taxes help pay for, so.
And that's an immediate strain that the schools would see right up front, is, uh, increase in enrollment. Now, also too, I, I did let them know in that meeting that even though the schools would need to give that approval, that we like to partner with the schools and we would definitely discuss something like this with the schools and not just, you know, totally discuss, have something like this presented to us and totally not include the schools because we can do it without them and we would never, you know, want to do that because we want to remain a partner with the schools of any type of project like this, especially, uh, you know, abatement of taxes. And one thing that I thought is, you know, because we're going to start seeing more building, uh, and everything going on and, and, you know, I know it's been done, it hasn't been done in the past where we have allowed abatements for apartment buildings. But may, you know, just like we did with water rates and things like that, we're starting to see some growth, starting to see some different things coming up. Maybe it should be part of the discussion to make it legislation or formally, you know, say, you know, what, who, you know, if they, if we're going to consider a basement, abatements for apartment buildings or not. You know, I know it hasn't been done in the past, but, you know, that's just a discussion that may need to happen.
And I, I think you, you're saying kind of the same thing I am, i- i- it's a slippery slope. Once you give an abatement to one apartment complex, every apartment complex that comes here is going to want at least minimum the same abatement. And it's tough to do one for one and not for the other. And I know all C R As are different, we set them up different, the, it's a negotiation. But once you do one, there's, because there's, I can tell you right now, more apartments are going to be built. I've had very in-depth discussions about, um, a lot more units coming in and, and so you put a strain on the school and take away, put kids in and, and they don't get their full amount of money and then you do it for the next one, do it for the next one, then it really puts a strain on the schools.
Alright, and, and we have not given abatements for apartment?
Not, we, we.
In the past.
I have, I've never seen one.
But we still have apartment buildings.
Correct.
Right. Just a couple of other things, because I was trying to ask this question a minute ago. Well, that's okay. Um, so, that discussion about the school, has anyone, and I believe maybe you've had a discussion with someone from the school, I did try to reach out to Donovan Cooper, but he had just loaded a bus to go to Washington, D.C. So, um, I have not had that discussion, I don't know if anybody else has had that discussion, but mayor, I believe maybe you have, in, in formally?
I- i- it is very informally, so, um, but I have had discussions with their leadership teams and, I mean, I won't go into too much detail, but I think we just discussed everything of, uh, of what a concern would be from a school standpoint.
And then I did also email, and I thanked everybody, just asking about written procedures, guidelines or checklists. And I think that, really, I think that's a great idea and the mayor said that he would, uh, look into that. So maybe that's something we'll have at our disposal in the future if somebody comes to us.
Alright, thank you. And again, I'd like to, uh, well, I'd like to thank everyone for, uh, coming out, those of you that are viewing online. Thanks again to all of our councilmen and thanks again to all of our, uh, policemen and women everywhere. Congratu- thank you for all that you do, you know, for, for the city, you put your lives on the line every single day. You know, especially when they go on those domestic disputes and things like that and, you know, a long time ago, I wanted to be a police officer and now, I'm, you know, all these years later, I, I, I really, uh, am grateful that there are so many that have decided to continue in that path, because we do need them. So thank you for all, all the work you do. And with that, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.